All right, thank you everyone. I need a motion to re-enter regular session, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Have a second. Thank you, Pat. I need a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes back into regular session at 6:11. All right, let's move on to the approval of tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the May 3 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Questions, comments on that? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, let's open up to public participation. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to come and address the school committee? Yes, please come on up, sir.
Good evening, y'all.
Hi, welcome.
My name is, thank you, my name is Peter Goulet, a 1987 graduate of EL. And I'm here for a few reasons today, none of which are negative. None of them are condescending. None of them are going to be slanderous or criticism. It's, first of all, I just want to start by saying thank you to all of you, to Scott, to all the teachers of the Auburn Public Schools, including my sister, Walton Sheree Larson. I'm a former educator myself, 23 years with the Massachusetts Public Schools, and I've recently been back to the area. I'm a school counselor by trade and director of guidance. Nine years with the Boston Public Schools, Revere, Sharon, and Blackstone Millville. So I just want to say thank you as you guys turn the page to a new chapter of the Auburn Public Schools. Secondly, I wanted to remind you of a few alumni that went to Edward Little High School that have really made something of themselves and that you should all be proud of, as I have to put my glasses on because I'm old.
Hey, 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 some of us wear them too.
But I'm cute. Bert Roeburg played for the Astros, White Sox and Expos. Luke Robinson was a wrestler. Pamela White was appointed U.S. Ambassador to the Gambia by President Obama. Cynthia McFadden, senior correspondent for NBC News, was a graduate of Edward Little High School. And lastly, the reason why I'm here tonight, Senator Olympia J. Snow was an alumni of Edward Little High School. Prior to my career and education, I worked for Olympia Snow for six years. She's from Auburn. She is Auburn. She went to Edward Little, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read you her bio. She lived on Nottingham Street, if you don't know. Nottingham Road, I apologize. Former United States Senator Olympia J. Snow has been, was in politics since she was in her early twenties. She was elected to the U.S. House of Representatives at the age of 31. Snow became the youngest Republican woman and the first Greek-American woman ever elected to Congress. She was also the first woman in American history to serve in both Houses of the State Senate and Legislature, as well as Congress. Her work as a leader and advocate continues to inspire generations of young women. Olympia Jean Bookless was born on February 21, 1947, in Augusta, Maine. One of the, one of two children. Her mother passed away of breast cancer less than a year later. Her father died of heart disease. At the age of nine, Olympia was an orphan. She moved to Auburn to be raised by her aunt and uncle and graduated from Edward Little High School. After graduating, she went on to the University of Maine to earn her degree in political science. In December 29, 1969, she married Republican state legislator Peter T. Snow and became Olympia J. Snow. Shortly after graduation, Olympia entered politics and began working with Congressman Bill Cohen on the voter, on the Board of Voter Registration. However, in 1973, Snow's husband was tragically killed in a car accident. At the age of 26, she was a widow. She was, she ran for the seat in which her husband had in the House of Representatives and won. She was re-elected in 1974 before becoming elected to the Maine Senate in 1976. While working in the Senate, Snow was selected as a delegate to both the state and national Republican Convention. Before her election to the U.S. Senate, Snow represented Maine's 2nd Congressional District for 16 years. She was the first woman in American history to serve in the House and State Legislatures in both House, in both State and Congress. When first elected in 1978 at the age of 31, Snow was the youngest Republican woman and the first Greek-American woman ever elected to Congress. She's won more federal elections in Maine than any other person since World War II and is the third longest-serving woman in the history of Congress. During this time, she has also co-chaired the Congressional Women's Caucus. In 1994, Snow was elected to the United States Senate. She served in the Senate until January 2, 2013, after being re-elected in 2006, her third and final six-year term. During her career, she served as a chair and ranking member of the Senate Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship. She became the first Republican woman ever to secure a full-term seat on the Senate Finance Committee and the first woman senator to chair the Subcommittee on Sea Power of the Senate Armed Service Committee. She's also a member of the Senate Commerce, Science, and Transportation Committee, the Budget Committee, the Foreign Relations Committee, and the Intelligence Committee. Snow's political beliefs led her to co-chair the Senate Centrist Coalition from 1999 to 2006. Until 2005, she was named the 54th Most Powerful Woman in the World. Forbes Magazine in 2006 called Olympia Snow "one of the top 10 United States Senators in our country." Detailing her years of experience, she published a book entitled Fighting for Common Ground: How We Can Fix the Stillmate in Congress. Snow founded the Olympia Snow Women's Leadership Institute, a nonprofit organization dedicated to encouraging high school girls to be leaders. Today, the charity serves 465 students at 36 public schools, pairing them with more than 200 trained advisors. Snow currently serves as a member of the institute's board and is honorary chair, recognized by her leadership, with, for her leadership. Snow was acknowledged as one of the NACD Dictatorships 100, an annual list developed by the National Association of Corporate Directors. She is also a member of the directors of various organizations and senior fellow at the Bipartisan Policy Center in Washington, DC. Senator Snow was married to former Governor John R. McKernan. With that being said, I'm asking you to consider renaming Park Street Elementary School Olympia J. Snow Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that.
To go, to go off of what he was saying, I am lucky to be a part of her leadership program that she has.
Oh, congratulations. And congratulations to you for being, for being qualified for that and able to participate in that. All right, anyone else in the public like to come address the school committee this evening? I think anyone else is here. All right, seeing none, we have a presentation this evening with Michelle Gagne in an Auburn Induction Academy presentation.
Hello again.
Hi.
Thanks to be back.
Nice to see you.
And our first year has passed of the Auburn Induction Academy, and I am thrilled to be here tonight to give you a brief rundown of what the year entailed for myself and Dr. Doris, who was helping out with that this year, and also our participants. So with that, I've prepared a few slides and have brought a few special guests. So we have had 38 members participate this year. Of course, all first-year teachers in Auburn, but not necessarily first-year teachers. Those 38 members have worked under the direction of 11 district mentors, which was a new framework for us this year, where in the past, we've had every mentor assigned to an individual new candidate for the district and that we thought we could do better by creating a cohort-type model for building capacity and fostering camaraderie around new members. So that was a new, a new initiative for us. We made sure that those mentors had a team-based approach and they were spread out, of course, through EL, AMS, the elementary schools, our nurse group, and guidance. We facilitated 10 sessions this year. Each one of those sessions followed a research-based workshop model designed to support teachers across kindergarten through 12th grade, so that was quite a challenge at times. And we made sure that all of our instruction was differentiated to meet their needs. The topics for our new teachers included, but are not limited to, all of the things that are listed here. Human resources, the association was there to represent them. Teachers got professional development in teacher evaluation cycles, family engagement, parent-teacher conferences, trauma-informed education, wellness and self-care, enhancing instruction with technology, regulating executive function skills, and developing a growth mindset. And all of those sessions were facilitated by administrators at time, our coaches and district professionals. So we had a wide array of people involved and had many opportunities for our new teachers to meet professionals in our district. We also focused every single session around tools for teaching. So whatever workshop model we were using, or whatever we were teaching within the workshop model, we also used a variety of tools that would help enhance classroom management. And again, that was interesting at times to make sure that that all fit for kindergarten teachers and teachers in high school. So that was always very interesting. But we did activities, including voting with your feet, using a classroom parking lot, using exit tickets, the workshop design, quick writes, turn and talks, and jigsaw activities. We also had opportunity to leverage technology through all of our sessions. These are a couple of the different things that really stood out. We had Mr. Davis come and do a presentation on Plickers. If you've never seen that before, it is quite something. And the photo here shows all of our participants participating in using the Plickers app. We also did a presentation on Clips and Canva, and again, those presentations were differentiated to meet teachers' needs across varying grade levels. So we want to wish a very hearty congratulations to our members, who we will be celebrating tomorrow with a presentation. They'll be meeting at East Auburn Community School, and then we'll be celebrating at Taber's. So we invite all of you to join us tomorrow at about 3:30 if you would like to come play mini-golf or enjoy an ice cream with this fine group of professionals. Included in the photo and also here to my left are Karen LaLiberty from AMS and also Sarah Hammond from Park Avenue School, and they are going to tell you a little bit about their individual experiences this year with AIA. And I guess Sarah is going to start.
Uh, no. Hi, I am Sarah Hammond. I am a first-year teacher at Park Ave. I took over a 6th grade position last spring as a long-term sub, and then I was hired on as that position. So I knew what I was getting myself into, but I didn't really know all the tips and tricks, like the classroom management skills, the tools for teaching, as Michelle calls them. And AIA was a really great opportunity to be a student and experiencing those methods and understanding them from a student's perspective, and it gave me more confidence to instill them into my own classroom. And so that was just such a great experience and such a great idea of the group to do that for new teachers like myself. The other part that was really just important to myself and I'm sure others was the camaraderie that was built within our own schools. I think there was five new teachers at Park Ave, five or six, and I felt closer to them in, as the school year went by, because we had our own mentor, but we all kind of knew each other from the meetings and from those mentor meetings. And so when it was November and dark and scary and we had no idea what we were doing, we were able to lean on each other in ways that was brought about because of this group. And so that was my experience. I can share a little bit more if we need, but I'll let my coworker here go.
Hello, I'm Karen LaLiberty. I'm a grade 7 teacher at Auburn Middle School. I teach math. So as a veteran teacher, actually, I've been teaching for 17 years, and I was hired, actually, by Auburn this year as a 5th grade teacher at Walton. And because of the district needs, they transferred me over, or they asked me to go, actually. So, and I transferred over to the middle school as a 7th grade teacher for doing math. And my experience with A1A this year has been an integral part of me being able to be successful at the middle school. My very first year in middle school, and I was always an elementary teacher, and that's what my expectation was when I came here. But it got switched, and it worked out for me, mostly because of the camaraderie with the group that we had through A1A, as well as the team that I have and my principal at Auburn Middle School. The transition was much easier because of the strong professional people that we have in Auburn. I'm very thankful to the group, A1A. Without them, I don't believe that I would have been able to transition as easily. I believe that some of the methods that I was reminded of as a veteran teacher, some of the ones that I may have forgotten as a first-year teacher and learned and maybe put aside, I was able to re-bring some of those back into my classroom this year with some reminders from the experience that I had with A1A. And I want to piggyback on what Sarah said. There was a great experience of collaboration and a tight, more tight-knit group, I believe, as a group of new teachers, because I've been a new teacher in other districts before, and I've never experienced anything like this. And it's always, you're going in, you have no idea about the building, the people, the policies. Everything's all changed. And that, we were able to, Michelle and Dr. Doris and all the speakers and wonderful people that came on to speak to us and let us know what was going on in Auburn, how to find out the things that we might not know how to find on ourselves and make it much easier for us to be able to navigate those, you know, nuts and bolts things that we have to navigate while we're learning about our students and trying to teach them and keep them moving forward. So it really was a wonderful experience, and they did an amazing job. They are top-notch people that you have working for you and working for us. So we are very lucky to have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if anybody has any questions. They were pretty thorough, but happy to take questions if anybody has any.
My comment is, first of all, thank you to both of you. I just, my question would be, and I think you've kind of answered it. Would you, would you feel as successful as a first-year teacher in this district had you not had this support around you? And you're both kind of shaking your heads, no. So this is something that you would encourage the Auburn Schools to continue as the years go on?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Awesome, thank you. And we know statistics show that teaching, teachers leave teaching sometimes within the first few years because they don't feel supported, they feel lost in the system. So would you say this helped to fill those needs, those gaps? Good, awesome. And Michelle and Dr. Doris, thank you. I thank you for seeing a need and for filling it and for wanting to retain some of the best people, so thank you both for that as well. Absolutely. All right, thanks for coming tonight, both of you too. We appreciate it. All right, uh, no, I don't, sorry. Oh, and Dr. Brown, who is not here this evening, but I believe this might have been a part of her brain, one of her wonderful brain childs as well. Absolutely, kudos to Dr. Brown as well. Uh, so I don't think we have any school, uh, school committee student rep reports this evening, uh, no superintendent's report. My report, I do have, just wanted to let you know that it is officially evaluation, evaluation season, and the first initial email went out letting people know who were selected, and they all cheered, and they were so thrilled that they got to be selected this year as admin. Right, you're so excited. Uh, and, but we have, through Dr. Doris's work, we have condensed, and it will be a much smoother system, so it should go a lot quicker this year. Um, other than that, and school committee members, we are moving to an online platform for the evaluation of the superintendent, so you'll be receiving an email with all your direct, directions when it's your time and along the timeline. Okay? Anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none. City Council update, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just three things. One, uh, thank you all. That showed up to the Lobster Festival is a huge hit. 6,000 people from all over the East Coast. So beautiful day, thank you all. And it's great to see a lot of students down there, down there as well, too, so that's one. Second, it seems we passed a budget. So, and I can't remember if it was unanimous or 6-1?
Yes, yes.
It was.
Unanimous.
Good. Uh, I just want to thank staff, Mark, Dr. Brown, and everybody else, department heads, and the, and the school committee for making this process go pretty well. And if you don't know, our overall mill rated increase is effectively zero. Uh, we're looking at 20 cents combined, the majority, not the majority, but a large chunk of that is governmental, which we have, well, the county, rather, which we have no control over. So we're looking at an average home of $250,000 with a $50 a year differential in taxes. So we're pretty proud of that. It's probably the lowest increase in the state of Maine this year. And the predominant reason is we were smart with budgets. Second reason is we had massive amounts of new value added from new growth, which is catching up, which is great. And we're getting a lot more sales tax rev share from the state of Maine, uh, because Auburn's economy is, is doing quite well. So that's great. Um, I did want to, one third, a comment. The gentleman who spoke about naming Park Ave reminded me of a time where my wife was actually chair of the school board, and Park Ave was coming about and concept and funding and so forth. And, uh, there was a really big push at that point to name the school after Senator Snow. The problem was Senator Snow was still an active senator at the time, and they thought, rightfully so, that that probably would not be the best thing to do. I would like to add, and I have an interview with a high school student, uh, which I need to excuse myself.
You're welcome.
But I would like to add as a future agenda item, we do have policy already in place for naming, um, at both the school board and the municipal level. I'd like to put that as a future agenda item.
Okay.
For discussion.
Yep, thank you. And I believe your student is right there. Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Jason. The, the, we had done, I know you had asked us to give $500,000, and we had kind of, Mr. Bellknap?
Yeah, we'd never used any of the fund balance. So what we did, and this is, I'm sorry, this is important, it was, and I missed it, but yes, we'd never used the fund balance from additional fund balance of the municipality or the school department. Thank you very much for offering that. We were going to use this to fund a dedicated drug interdiction task force called our PACE program. I brought that forth, we ended up adding that to the budget, but we also, at the same time, we had new estimates on additional value, which offset the costs, which negated the need for us to actually tap into the fund balance. Okay? And we got the two dedicated drug enforcement folks, so.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, yes, you are. Excuse Mr. Mayor. All right, committee reports. Any questions on any of the, minutes from any of the committee reports? Seeing none, moving on, move on to old business. Can I obtain a motion for a second reading and approval of policy AUB EBCC bomb threats, please?
So moved.
Thank you Brian. Pam, you want a second? Or, whoop, you guys came through. So Brian, I'll put you first. Pam, you okay to second? All right, questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Next is, uh, obtain a motion for a second reading and approval of policy AUB EBCE, school closings and cancellations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Brian, have a second?
Second.
Thank you Pam. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Next is, can I call for a motion on a second reading and approval of policy AUB EBCF automated external defibrillators? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Pam, thank you Brian. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next, I'll call for, uh, call for a motion, second reading and approval of policy AUB ECA, school safety and security video, safety cameras. Do I have a motion? Thank you Pat.
Second.
Thank you Brian. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next is a call for a motion with second reading and approval of policy AUB ECB pass management in school facilities and on school grounds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Brian, have a second? Thank you Clarissa. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, oop, sorry. Oh, you're good, okay. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to new business, I can obtain a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Educational Support Unit. Do I have a, have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, Pat, you okay if I put you first?
Second.
Okay, Brian, you okay to second? Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion approves. Next, call for a motion to approve the purchase of fitness equipment from Matrix Fitness for the new Edward Little High School weight room at a cost of $89,062.19. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Brian, you have a second?
Second.
Oh, Pam, thank you Pam. Questions, comments on that one? Yep?
I was wondering why we're only getting one bid.
That would be Mark.
I think for both, for both fitness and custodial equipment, we only received one bid, I think. For this one, there may be a number of reasons. There are relatively few companies that provide that equipment. The only other two companies we sent, the, that requested the RFP were out of state. We did publicly advertise all of these. The other thing we find, generally speaking, we talked a little bit about this in the last Finance Committee meeting, is you either have industry consolidation where there are fewer competitors around in many cases, or they're understaffed, so they're not responding to bids. So beyond that, I don't have a firm answer, because I haven't spoken to companies that chose not to bid.
So this is the one bid we've got?
This is, I, I will say, this is a company that's very focused on a presence in Maine because they've recently won bids for both Mount Air Rat and Morse High Schools, so they're very active in the area.
All right, thank you Mark. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right, motion passes, thank you. Next is a motion to approve the purchase of custodial equipment from W. Mason for the new Edward Little High School at a cost of $64,949.89. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Brian, do I have a second? Thank you Pat. Questions, comments on that one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next is a motion to approve the purchase of art furniture from Creative Office Resources for the new Edward Little High School at a cost of $56,178.1. Do I have a motion? Thank you Brian, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Pam. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing?
I'm just curious, what the, how long is this stuff supposed to last?
Pardon?
How, how long is it supposed to last? I'm just curious. It seemed like a huge amount of money.
You mean the art furniture?
Yeah.
The furniture?
Yeah.
I'm hoping, well, you're bonding for 20 years, so we're hoping it lasts for 20 years. The reality is, if, if we, this district has done a better job than many school systems in replacing furniture at the high school level. Uh, I know many high schools, they're 30 years old and they have the original furniture, so it tends to go a long time. If you buy the right furniture, right, so it lasts.
They're not making furniture as durable as it used to.
No, they're not. And they're higher priced.
No idea. All right, any other questions or comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Uh, this last one, I need a motion to accept a $60,000 donation from the East Auburn Community Unit to Edward Little High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, you want a second to that one?
Second.
Questions, comment on that one? Sure, Pat? Just push your, push your button, Pat, sorry.
Uh, reading the information that we were given, the second piece for 10,000 that's included in that is going to the Maine Community Foundation. Is that, does that mean they're going to just use the interest and leave that?
Uh, we, we met with some of the folks from, Lisa and other folks from the East Auburn Unit, and they're going to disperse a set amount each year. And over time, it may decline, but that, that's their preference, is to provide a set amount so they can count on certain income every year to assist in the Special Olympics.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on that one, Pam?
I just want to thank them. I think that's a, it's a tremendous amount of money, and I think that it's very generous, so just want to put that out there to thank them.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Again, thank you very much for that generous donation. All right, upcoming meetings are listed. I've got one item for future agenda items. Any other future agenda items or request for information from school committee members? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you Brian.
So moved.
Second, Pam, all those in favor? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn 6:39 PM. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everyone. Ben, you got time, hurry up, get there!
Budget meeting in RSC4 tonight. It's the public budget hearing.